Good time.
Oh, are we on? I thought we, I thought I'd see, oh, not so, huh? Well, I'm gonna purposely delay for a little bit. Mr. Inskeep just walked in, I understand, and rather than our going into roll call with Adam, I'll, I'll give him maybe another minute or so.
Shall we rise when he comes in?
That might be a good idea. I remember a time I was late that I got a standing ovation, I think. There we go.
My apologies.
Nope. Glad you could be as, as close to time as you were, knowing you had some things going on. Okay. Well, it's nice to see an almost full house. Welcome everyone to this evening meeting of the Hutchinson City Council on this date, October 16, 2018. Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Here.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Here.
Soldner?
Here.
Inskeep?
Finally here.
Deckent.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Darrell.
Good evening. I was here early.
Yes, you were.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Most Gracious Father, we thank you so much for the young people of this community. Father, for all the, all the things that they do and accomplish, that, Father, I know they don't get the appreciation or the, the observation of what, all the things they do accomplish, and I thank you for that. And, Father, I also add into the, the communities that care, the, Father, the organization that does so much in the community. And that's what this community is all about, is people doing what they need to be doing. And I thank you, Father, for our council. I thank you, Lord God, for the leadership that we have in this city. And, Father, we just pray blessings over the leadership, over the meeting tonight. And, Father, we just thank you for good choices to be made, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Darrell. Okay, we have a couple proclamations this evening. I understand there are a couple of folks here from Bright House. Would you join me, please? How are you this evening? Okay. Whereas domestic violence is a widespread, preventable, public health problem impacting all demographics of Kansans, Kansas communities, and residents of Hutchinson, and whereas relationships are often counted as life's greatest treasures, and tragically, many are tarnished by one person's entitlement to power and control over the other, resulting in violence and fear. And domestic violence abusers violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity with their intentional, systematic use of financial, psychological, sexual, physical, and coercive control and abuse. And whereas the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention reports that one in three, or about thirty-six percent of American women, and one in three, or about thirty-three percent of American men, experience contact sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner during their lifetime. Yet, only one in four American women and one in ten, you know, American men experiencing domestic violence are also reporting that in some form, related impact from inflictions. And this violence translates to a third, or one in three Kansans, amounting to over one million people and thirty-five percent of the Kansas population. And whereas the U.S. Department of Justice reports domestic violence homicides comprise fourteen percent of all homicides in the U.S., and that women are more than twice as likely as men to be killed by an intimate partner. And the Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports domestic violence homicides are twelve-point-eight percent of all homicides in Kansas in 2016, and in 2016. One domestic violence arrest was made by law enforcement every forty-six minutes, one domestic violent incident occurred every twenty-three minutes, and one domestic violence murder occurred every nineteen days in Kansas. Now therefore, I, Stephen A. Deckent, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and recognize this violence is inconsistent with Hutchinson's values and cannot be tolerated. Congratulations with Black Safety, words?
Sure.
You sure, ma'am?
Sure. Thank you. We are just very thankful for the support of the community. Here in Reno County alone, we provided services to two-hundred-and-eighty-four victims, and we housed in our shelter thirty-six people. And without the community's support, we would be unable to do that. So we just want to raise awareness. It's our vision to completely abolish any kind of domestic or sexual assault, and with everybody's help, I think that we can get it done. So thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we've got one or two folks here with communities with vi, uh, hmm, communities that care, correct? You get to be the representative, right? All right, you'll do a great job. Steve Deckent, Alex, good answer, Alex. Whereas the Red Ribbon was chosen as a symbol commemorating the, the work of Enrique "Kiki" Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and has come to represent the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to promote this belief and encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention efforts, and success will not occur overnight, our patience and continued commitment to drug education and prevention are imperative. And whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. And whereas the goal of Red Ribbon Week is to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign, and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. And whereas the Red Ribbon Week campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibilities for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without illegal drugs or the illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas the Hutchinson City Council, along with the Reno County Communities that Care, value prevention for the health and safety of all of our citizens, and October 20 to 31, 2018, has been designated National Red Rib, Red Ribbon Week, calling on all Americans to show their support for a drug-free state by wearing a red ribbon and participating in drug-free activities during that week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Stephen A. Deckent, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, hereby proclaim October 22 to 31, 2018, as Red Ribbon Week in this city, and encourage all citizens to join the rest of the state in promoting the Red Ribbon Celebration and a drug-free America. Alex? You want to say a few words?
Yeah. Go ahead. So, I'm Alex Mahoney, and I'm a junior at Hutchinson High. I have a few notes. It is a big deal that we're doing this in our community, because it is communities that cares, responsibility to give back to those who need stuff, who need love, whether it be physical, emotional, mental. And it's also a big deal to me, because my parents were both drug addicts, and I want to give back whatever they, well, they didn't really take anything. Also, prevention is the beginning of a big step towards a bigger goal for us. Hutch, you're just one step. Watch out, roll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Mayor, would you care to say Red Ribbon Week one more time?
Red Ribbon Week. You know, I read over that, but I, I did it up here and not with my mouth, and I didn't realize how much of a tongue twister that was.
It is, everybody does.
Did we preempt it? Did you want to say something as well?
No, I did not.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Certainly, two very important and weighty issues that we have proclamations about, but it is fantastic that we have the Bright Line Domestic Violence Sexual Assault Center, as well as the youth that draw our attention to the significant issue that drug, drug use and drug abuse is. Okay, with that, our next item is comments from the members of the audience. This is the time when we offer the opportunity for folks in the audience to, to address the council. We would ask that you keep your comments to three to five minutes and, and give us your name and address, if you would, please. I, I do know that a gentleman from REAP, Mr. John Waltner, is here, and, and so I'd, I'd ask him to come up and go ahead and, and address this, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. It's not easy being mayor, is it?
Well, especially when there are tongue twisters to read about six times or more in a proclamation. And it didn't get better as I went on.
My name is John Waltner, as you, as you've been told. I live in, I live in the city of Heston. I'm here on behalf of the Regional Economic Area Partnership, the REAP organization. I'd like to tell you just a little bit about myself, very briefly, and, and believe me, I have gone to enough city council and county commission meetings to know the value of brevity. So, so I assure you, I, I will be brief, but I do very much appreciate being able to take a couple minutes with you this evening. I became mayor of the city of Heston in 1985, and I served in that capacity for twenty-five years. And then during that time, I also began to work with Harvey County as, as special projects director, and then finally retired from that after seven years as county administrator about a year and a half ago. I tell you that because I really got hooked on local government. I very much value it, and I do commend you for doing what you do, because what you just saw a few minutes ago is some of the very important work that you do. You folks know that the level of government you work with is in many ways the most important, because it affects people more directly and more profoundly than any other level. So, thank you for doing what you're doing. It, it's, it's work, sometimes it's fun, but it's very, very important. Well, during the time I, I was an elected official, I started working with the REAP organization in the early 2000s. The Regional Economic Area Partnership was started in 1997. In fact, the city of Hutchinson has a longstanding tradition of being very supportive and actively engaged with REAP, going clear back to the days of Joe Palacio, I believe, the name that probably rings a bell with many, many of you, quite a number of years ago. The thing I value so much about the REAP organization is that it promotes regional prosperity through building relationships among elected officials in the region. We cover a nine-county region, going down the southern border of the state, up through McPherson County, Reno County on the west, Butler County on the, on the east, and a lot of municipalities in, in between all of that. So my purpose tonight is really twofold, and the first thing I'm going to tell you is the most important. I want to simply say thank you. Thank you for being members of REAP and for supporting the organization. I spent a lot of time working with REAP as an elected official since my retirement. I've decided to do a little bit of work with them in the area of member relations, so that's what I'm doing. I'm trying to visit all twenty-six member cities and counties, and there are a few miles in between all of those, I want you to know. But I very much appreciate your support of, of the organization and your engagement. That's really the most important thing, the engagement that, that we see from our members in, in the organization. In addition to that, I want you to know just a little bit about what the organization has done over the last year, year and a half. I put at each of your places a copy of the 2017 annual report. It's not a cumbersome annual report, it's a fold-out printed brochure. You open it up and you see the name of all of the member cities and counties. Some of these have changed, because the representative from each city and county needs to be an elected official. Sometimes it's the mayor, sometimes not, but if it's the mayor, then the mayor sometimes change and so on, and Mr. Dave Line is, is still, still on here as, as the, as a representative from the city of, from the city of Hutchinson. Might also say that John Deardorff has been a, has been a strong supporter and engage, and engager in this organization. I very much appreciate that. If you open that up, you'll see just a listing of some of the things that the organization has been involved in. We're not going to go through that, all of you can read, but what it does is give you a sense of some of the relationship building, the, the kinds of things that the organization has been engaged in, working with BREG, for example, the Blueprint for Regional Economic Growth, that probably is something familiar to some of you. Also, working with a lot of the major highway projects that occur in, in this part of the state, as well as promoting commercial air service. REAP was instrumental in the, in acquiring a, a low-cost carrier for what had been Mid Continent Airport, now is, is the new Eisenhower Airport. But it's very, very significant to all of us, whether you fly on any of those planes, whether you ever use the airport, it's a huge economic asset to the, to the prosperity, really, of this entire region. So you can take a, take a look at that at your leisure, but I would, would encourage you to browse through that if you would. I do want to bring to your attention a meeting that's coming up on November the first, that is being sponsored by REAP, and you're all supposed to have received invitations to this. I checked with the REAP secretary today, and we thought that invitations had gone out to everybody. I want to be sure that you know about this. There's gonna be, there will be an Economic Development Summit on November the first. It's held at the Hughes Metroplex in Wichita, that's the building owned by Wichita State University at Twenty-Ninth and, Twenty-Ninth and Oliver is, is where that's located. It's in the afternoon on, on the first of November, and we'll, well, first of all, there will, there'll be a speaker from Kansas City, who'll talk about the importance of approaching these, these kinds of things, like reg, like economic development on a regional basis, which is difficult to do, because we oftentimes think of the wins, the economic development wins, as being very localized, the benefits being very localized, and of course, there are some that are. But I think we also know, when we stop to think about it, if you stand out on K-96 and look at traffic going back and forth between Reno County and Sedgwick County every single day, morning and night, same thing when I go out and stand on, on the overpass over 135 in Harvey County, thousands of people are going back and forth. So an economic development win in McPherson County is just as important, really, to many people who live in Wichita and Harvey County and Reno County as it is the people who live in, in McPherson County. So, we'll be spending just a little bit of that day focusing on the importance of thinking regionally, and then there will be a couple of breakout sessions where people will talk, talk about the importance of exports. For example, Karen Page from, from Kansas Global will, will be there to talk about exports, the importance of that, and I know that, that that's something that's near and dear to people in, in Hutchinson because of Siemens here, that's a very, very significant kind of a, kind of a facility. So, there will be, be some of those kinds of things, as well as breakouts on, on some local economic development things that work and some that don't work. So, it should be a very interesting time. If you've never had a chance to come to a, to a REAP meeting in the past, please do, if you can free, free your, your schedule that day, come. It's, it's, this, this organization is a coalition of the willing, that's all it is. People who can be there, come. And I can tell you, it's, it's somewhat infectious, because the relationships that are built allow us eventually to build the kind of trust that we really need in this region in order to go forward. And that's the last thing I just wanted to focus on a little bit, simply that. We all know that 2008, 2009 was a very, very difficult time for all of us nationwide, certainly in south-central Kansas. Our recovery from that, if you've been following any of the reports that Jeremy Hill sends out from the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State University, or the James Chung, the consultant that has been in the Wichita area over the last three years, talking about the kinds of things that communities need to do in order to really, really begin to catch fire. You know good and well, that even though we've recovered somewhat from that, from that recession, our rate of recovery, I'm sorry to say, is nowhere close to what it ought to be. It simply is not. There is no way you can look at any, at any of the data and come to the conclusion that we're doing everything that we should be doing, and doing it really, really well. So I think there's a real challenge to us. One of the things that you know, all of us know, is that right now workforce, the availability of skilled workforce is probably the most significant issue that is hampering economic growth and real growth of prosperity in our region. We don't have people. We don't have people. There are far more jobs available than people. The development of an economic development strategy, which includes a marketing strategy for the region, to get skilled people to move here, is something that I can guarantee you can't be done by Heston alone, can't be done by Hutchinson alone. All of us really need to have a voice in that, so I'd really encourage you to be, to be available, to engage in that, to develop that marketing strategy along with the entities in Wichita who, who will be working with that as well. So, it's my challenge to you, but mostly I want you to remember how much we appreciate your support of the organization, and we look forward to continue to work with you. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Good to see you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Seeing none? Next item, please.
Item six, Consent Agenda.
Is there a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
And moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Pyros DeCarvallo?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inskeep?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes.
Item seven A, Consider Shared Cost Agreement with Fair City Folk Art for Infrastructure Improvements of Avenue B and Main.
Good evening, Council. Jim Saitnader, Downtown Development, here to talk about an exciting project that's going on at the corner of B and Main, and we're lucky this evening to have Kathy Burrell with us, who is the project manager for her sister Lucinda Peligian on this project. So, I thought it would be fun, after we did our business, if she could give us kind of an update and tell you a little bit about how spectacular this building's going to be and how it will be used by many folks. The issue tonight is a shared cost sidewalk curb and gutter and drainage project on Avenue B, West Avenue B from the corner, which runs parallel to the building, which will be the entrance point for the grand ballroom that will be on the second floor of the project. It is a fantastic project, and it will bring life to an important building that was kind of the epicenter of downtown's real rehabilitation and livelihood in 2008, 2009, and 10, as our antiques area kind of grew and prospered, and things like Third Thursday and, and much of that has happened in that area. As the project was going on and work was going, happening, Bruce Colley and I, the former engineering director, looked over the, the area there, because there, there's several bits of, the alley is, is a place where there's still much brick, and there was a big bunker that AT&amp;T worked on about a year or so ago, and so there was a lot of activity there. And then, in Bruce's research, he found that there was a drain inlet that had never been put in towards the far west end of B Street. So, as we were talking about, because Lucinda was wanting to replace the sidewalk because of the entrance and many things, that it would be a good time to look at kind of fixing some infrastructure issues in the area, because a new curb was necessary for the new sidewalk to match up to. So that's how we got to this point. The, our engineering department kind of laid out some specs, and we put it out for bid, and the low bid for the project was from Voits Parga, who are the group that are doing our Main Street work, and that amount was forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and fifteen cents. So, Lucinda, in conversation, had agreed to do the sidewalk portion of the repairs, which is about thirteen thousand dollars, thirteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and ninety cents, and that would leave the city a balance of thirty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-one, twenty-five, and we do have funds set aside from some downtown projects, parking lots, things like that, to be able to cover that balance. So, I'm here tonight to ask your approval of this request to initiate the cost share agreement with Fair City Folk Art, and to accept the bid from Voits Parga Inc. for forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and fifteen cents. So I'd answer any questions.
Jim, or maybe it's even a broader question to, to John, what similar prior such projects, where there's been a cost share? where there's been a cost share, such as proposed with this one?
Well, probably our most noticeable cost share was the Wiley project and the investment that we made to provide parking assistance through the parking garage. There's been a number of smaller cases, most recently Queen B and Iabella. There's been a lot of great activity in that block between A and Sherman on Main, and there was an alley that was quite dark, and so we added some security lighting there. And of course, our plan for next year is to resurface that parking lot to match the one we did last year. So we've been trying to, you know, pick up projects as investment has happened along Main Street. But the most noticeable one would have been the parking garage.
And even along with the Wiley project, beyond that, the sidewalk curb and, you know, that was all done as part of the streetscape projects that, we funded some of that, state-funded some of that as well.
That was primarily a state grant, though, was it not?
Yeah.
State funding, yeah.
There was significant.
The sidewalk along Walnut was a piece because what becomes hard is when the new sidewalk goes in, if the curb and guttering and things aren't in good shape, it doesn't make for a good project. And then it always kind of felt like, you know, the developer's doing his part to make things look nice, and it'd kind of be a shame if our curbs and things like that weren't in good repair. That might look badly on us.
I guess my concern is, and you cite Wiley, however that is, that, I don't know if that's quite apples and apples, given the scope and the nature of the Wiley project, and you mentioned a couple of other things, but how we make a decision from case to case or request to request? And I guess I'm thinking another active project going on is the link there at B.
Sherman.
Sherman. And Washington.
If there were a similar request, would we be, would you be proposing, or would someone be proposing that we do something similar there? And then related, I'll stop with that and follow that up.
Yeah. Well, I certainly would advocate for a similar situation because that curb line and things along Sherman Street's in very, very bad shape, too. So it would seem to me that the message that would come out of a $3.3 million development on a corner that had been empty for 30-some years, to not have the walkway and the outside match the, you know, the importance of the building itself and things like that would not be for a, you know, leave a good look for a project. So, but we do have a number of curbs everywhere that, you know, would fall into a similar situation.
And, you know, just adding to that, we had a similar conversation on Landmark, although we haven't gotten to that point that, you know, where they were putting in renovation of Landmark, and our share was going to be sidewalk curb, kind of some parking improvements there. But obviously, that hasn't progressed to any further than just talk. So, but it primarily, and, you know, we don't have a policy. It's primarily going to be a case-by-case basis, depending upon, you know, how much development's going on in that facility, and then, you know, what our infrastructure, what kind of condition it's in. And so.
Yeah, I would certainly say if someone wants to drop a million and a half dollars of investment into downtown Hutchinson, we could throw in 50 grand to help with the shared infrastructure that everybody would be using to access that improvement. I'm 100% behind this, and I think it is somewhat similar to what we did at the Wiley. Yes, that was an enormous investment. What was that, eight or was it $11 million project?
Total, their total project was 17 million.
17, but we invested two and a half million in that parking garage. I mean, that's percentage-wise, probably a higher percentage of shared investment on the city's part, so excited about this project.
Yeah, and normally, we would not be asking a developer to pay for an alley approach or resolving drainage issues that are further down the, down the street. So to me, this is very workable compromise, gets good things done for both parties.
And the alley portion, we estimated that about 12 grand, and that really is kind of separate from, I mean, it's part of this, but it is something that doesn't really have anything to do with the project. It's going to be a good improvement, but, so.
And I look forward to something from the Link project, too. I'm bringing on.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, the alley there serves, you know, three of our really important businesses with Westlake Smiths and now This Corner, and then the Stevens Building work. So, you know, there's a lot of really great activity in this area. And to be able, I went out and looked this morning, about mid-morning, there's still some puddles of water in that alley from, and we haven't had rain, you know.
That's really nice.
So it's, I think, a very good way to help just finish off a fantastic project. And the million and a half is just the building permit amount. That's really a drop in the bucket when you talk about the building purchase and what Kathy's going to tell you about. This project will well exceed the 2 million mark and probably higher than that even. So, you know, we've been blessed downtown with a lot of these great projects, and it's just exciting to see. And, you know, when, even when we look at the most recent work between Third and Fifth Street, what the streetscape's done with the new Wool Market building and several small shops that have opened up in buildings. And so those kinds of public improvements have really led to a lot of private investment over the years, so, and I think that will continue.
Yeah, when you look at the split of the cost share, it's about 70, 70, 30. I'd be curious to know who the Fair City Folk Art LLC might be, and maybe you'll share with us who that is. But it seems like it's a very equitable, they've got some sweat equity in it, too, as does the city, and on a public improvement or public infrastructure. So I think it's very equitable and a very positive step on all parties' part.
Thank you.
Well, we're close to Christmas, so I guess it's appropriate that I'm feeling like the Grinch. I do support this project, by the way, but I think that we need to keep in mind, at some point, there'll be a project that comes forward, and it won't be as whatever. And so I get uncomfortable when we have a, maybe not a one-of-a-kind, but an unusual or out-of-the-ordinary request. And we really don't have anything to guide us, other than, hey, this is a great project. We want to support it. It's promoting downtown. And between several of you and Jim, the other half a dozen or dozen reasons why. Funding is one of those. You know, we happen to have some money left over, but given the tightness of our city budget, it would be nice to have that money left over and carried over to next year also. So I'm just, I think that, for me at least, in my mind, regardless of my liking or support of the project, I think that those are things that need to be at least in mind and not, I don't want to say dismissed, but left out there, not considered, when we get to the next one that may be requested. And I mentioned the Link, because I would expect quite potentially to hear from them. But another project, another project. And where do we have another 40,000 or another 50,000? You know, that wasn't budgeted or planned on. So I, I'm not so much arguing against this as I am just commenting that I feel in the enthusiasm of this is a good thing, that we also need to recognize that there are reasons to step back and pause and think about down the road as there are more good projects. Can we continue to afford them? And what are the criteria that we consider as we say yes or no? Jim, one more question, and I shouldn't say only one more, but another question. So although I think you've addressed it, but I'll ask, what would be the impact of not doing the curb and gutter?
Well, the whole sidewalk issue might be an issue of how it would tie in, you know, it's like, it's like patching a tire, a worn tire. It might get you down the road a little bit, but it eventually is going to fail.
Interesting analogy.
So my thought is, it would not be good planning to put new infrastructure in a failing curb line because I don't think it would probably, you know, set up correctly and do the things you want it to do.
Would it be an elevation issue?
I'm certainly no engineer or no construction guy, but that would be my thought. It would, you know, it's just a perfect opportunity to finish off a great project with the type of streetscape that the area should warrant and should have. And, you know, all of our other work along Main Street over time has been on our money and the state's money. You know, we tried hard to leverage as much of the state funding and federal funding as we could to make it work for us. But this, this would be somewhat out of the ordinary in the fact that they're willing to share cost on the sidewalk piece of it. So that's a lot more than the average project would have done along Main Street.
I've been silent, so it's about my time, I guess, to pop in. I'm in favor of the project, obviously, and I'm very much leaning towards agreeing to the cost share. I hear what you're saying, Mayor, with regards to that. And I don't know quite how to resolve that without actually coming up with a policy, and I'm not sure what that would look like, what parameters would have to be hit, what boxes need to be checked to warrant a deal. But what I can say for myself is it does check those boxes on this particular occasion for me. Numerous reasons we mentioned, but then also some of the things that we're talking about with investment in our current infrastructure and downtown and redevelopment of downtown, I think it hits those things. Sorry, sticker in my sock, I'll explain that later. But, right. But I.
Red ribbon, red ribbon.
Exactly. But with that being said, I wouldn't mind, you know, having a further discussion about what something like that might look like, because I think you're right. Maybe something needs to be, some sort of conversation needs to be had about future endeavors along that line. But again, like I said, I'm in favor of going forward with this. That's my piece.
One more point that I wanted to toss out there, as far as the conversation line that I've been taking. Of course, we're talking about downtown development, or at least business development. There are any number of areas throughout our city where residential curb and gutter is not only in bad shape, but it's almost non-existent. It's so deteriorated. So what if I, as a homeowner, am willing to replace my sidewalk, to beautify my lawn, and yet here I come up to this edge where the curb and gutter is deteriorated and et cetera, et cetera? Again, I, I'm not opposing this, but there's just all issues that come to my, came to my mind as I thought about this, and I think that they ought to be kept in mind. And with that.
I'd just like to offer one more thing. If we think back to this community 15, 18 years ago, about the time that we had the gas explosion, and just absolutely devastated our downtown area. And since that time, that was 2001, so it's been 17 years. I think Jim could share with us some incredibly enormous amounts of investment from the private sector and the public sector that have been made in our downtown area to make it what it is today. And it's the lifeline of our city, the downtown central business district. And at one time, that wasn't necessarily the case because there were split factions in the community. And so I think the light bulb went on back in 2001, and what has occurred since then makes us awfully proud of our downtown area. And if this is a small way that we, as a public agency, can encourage that kind of investment, then I'm all for that.
Thank you very much. I might dovetail. Vice Mary Inskeep and I had an opportunity to talk with some South Hutch folks recently, and one of the elements that came out of that was an expression of, envy's not a good word, recognition of our downtown and a wish or desire to replicate some, something along that line in their own community. So it's certainly recognized beyond, beyond ourselves.
Certainly a team effort because our councils have always been very supportive of the right projects and things like that. And to me, this is one very much like that. And I think we'll see great results from it because the types of folks that are going to come and visit this location will be good for the economy of our community.
Yes. I also want to say that your concerns shouldn't be dismissed. I think they're very valid, and I had some of the same thoughts, Steve, when I was reading this. But at the end of the day, thinking that if you can't do everything, then do nothing isn't a recipe for growth. And if we don't have a policy of set minimums on investment versus public, you know, private versus public, then we're going to always have to make a decision on a case-by-case basis. And that's going to involve a lot of emotional pull, regardless of how much we want to make it a rational, you know, policy on everything. So I, again, downtown has worked because there's been significant public investment to prop up the private investment. So all for it.
Mike, there be a motion?
I would move to approve the bid from Voits Parga in the amount of $49,217.15 and enter into a shared cost agreement with Fair City Folk Art LLC, with Fair City Folk Art paying $13,749.90 for a new sidewalk and a balance of $35,471.25 for infrastructure improvements on West Avenue B to be paid by the city of Hutchinson and authorize the mayor to sign any necessary documents.
I will second, but I also wanted to mention that it'd be great to hear from Kathy if she wanted to.
Well, I was going to say, whether we delay the vote or would, after?
Like, you could do it after.
Yeah, let's, we've got a motion and a second. I guess we'll consider this part of our discussion period. Jim, you'd offered to have someone speak to us about the project.
Yeah, this is Kathy Burrell, and she's the project manager.
A lot of public speaker, but I'm really excited about this project. I think Mr. Daveline asked about who the Fair City Folk Art, and Fair City Folk Art is owned by my sister Lucinda and her husband Craig. And originally, they were looking for a building to put in a folk art museum, and then, which they still are. But this building, we got in there, and we see the crystal ball room and just saw a lot of possibilities. We are renovating it historically. The upstairs ballroom will be able to seat 250 people. It's all the original wood floors, tin ceilings. It's beautiful up there. We've put in a commercial kitchen, which will, people can use, or Lucinda and Craig plan on bringing in some events and bringing in chefs and having, you know, just, I think, really nice experiences for the city and the people of Hutch. We have one, I guess, tenant for downstairs. They're putting in their bakery, and we have a couple other spaces that'll be for rent. We took one of the spaces and put in an, we made a lobby downstairs and put in an elevator, so it's all ADA accessible. We have an office, brides' room, groom's room, storeroom, really nice, large ADA accessible bathrooms. And, you know, just made it, we wanted to make it all-inclusive for everybody, that they can enjoy it. It's, it's pretty exciting. It's going to be really beautiful. And, I mean, I probably shouldn't say it, but the curbing really is dangerous. I mean, it's got chunks out of it. And I know my sister, when you're saying about the street, my sister redid a house on Main Street in 2009 and put in all new sidewalks, all new driveway, and the curbing then was also awful, and so now we have. And the curving then was also awful, and so now we have breaks in the sidewalk, and it's not quite the same as it was. But I mean, sometimes you can, I mean, this really, that's a per, a house, and this is going to have, you know, possibly two hundred and fifty people plus caterers. We've put in a, the kitchen is also a catering kitchen. We've, we've had some interest in people that want to rent commercial kitchens because, like, if you want to sell your own little spices and different stuff, you have to do it in a commercial kitchen in order to sell it publicly, out of a store or whatever. But I'm, like I said, I'm not really a speaker, but it's really, it's a...
Yeah, you're doing great.
I think it's really exciting. And Lucinda couldn't be here, but she's going to be here Thursday and Friday. Her daughter's getting married, so she, her daughter has put her on lockdown. Staying home and helping with getting that ready.
So, is there a timeline on this project?
Well, the biggest thing that's holding us up is, we weren't aware when we bought the building, that it, it lets water in. And we did re-tuck pointed the entire building, and it's got a new roof, and we put a new parapet. And we now, I've met with one brick person that does historic. They've said we need to seal the building, and the historic doesn't like that, but it can pass through, so that's what we're working on. And we need to replace all the windows. It had residential windows were installed not properly. So, we get water, and it comes in about three, four feet, entire building, sorry. Entire building, the entire first floor. So, the upstairs, we're doing finishes, but downstairs, we had to put in all-new LVLs in the building to support the building. And downstairs, we have to wait so we can keep the water out, so we can finish the sheet rock. We're going to sheet rock everything but the outside edges so that we can get the sprinkler systems finished there and the lighting. But we want it to be able to have Christmas parties there, but that isn't going to happen. Hopefully, we can get windows and all this taken care of in like five weeks, and then we're on finishes. So, that goes fast. Once you get to finishes, it's all the, you know, the pre-work is the, the stuff that nobody sees. I mean, they've spent five months putting in HVAC and, you know, all-new everything, so...
Well, it does sound like you've done wonderful work there. Sorry to hear about, I'd heard a couple days ago about the water coming in.
It's, it's terrible. It really, it's, it's really disheartening.
Do you plan an open house perchance?
Yes, we plan several open houses.
Several, okay.
Yes, no, we do. Lucinda wants to have multiple open houses, and I know that the council, council is begging for us not to open until July so they can be the first ones. But hopefully, we're, you know, hopefully, the beginning of the year, we can start soft openings and, you know, but, oh, definitely. Right now, I'd let people, it's a little dangerous with construction going on, so we really can't. But we definitely are planning open houses, and I think it's something Hutchinson really doesn't have right now. I mean, it's going to be beautiful chandeliers, and there's just a lot of character up there. And we've heard a lot of stories about the crystal ball room and people standing on B, watching people falling down steps. We put in an elevator, so there won't be any need for that. Okay.
All right. Thank you very much, Kathy. Appreciate it.
Kathy, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bid from Voits Parga. Any further discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hi, Reste Carvalho?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzkeep?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes. Next item?
Item eight, report of city officials.
Okay, Nancy?
Nothing.
John?
No, I have nothing.
David?
Only as a proud parent, the reason I was late, for those that care, was I was attending my eighth grade daughter's, Chloe Inzkeep's league cross-country meet. And I'm happy to report she took first. So, then I had to run as fast as I could to the car and then get in and head this way. So, I do apologize, but for me, it was worth while. Second, if I could mention again, coming up this, next Tuesday, the twenty-third, is the Strong Towns conversation that's going to be held at the Fox Theater from six to seven-thirty. It's going to be an interesting conversation, some of it around development like we're talking about today. Actually, I might run that by the guy and see if we did the right thing by his opinion or not. But encourage as many people to show up. I, I think it's going to be a good conversation. And lastly, were you going to talk at all, Mayor, about our, our trip to Topeka or...
I figured you were probably going to.
Okay, I, I'll touch briefly.
Go ahead.
Very fine. So, the mayor and myself went to Topeka last week, I guess it was, yeah, to meet with a group of people that were interested in protecting and keeping the Southwest Chief open. And there was attendance from people all the way from California, I don't remember if from Arizona, but there was New Mexico, Texas, well, no, there wasn't Colorado, but the Garden City, City Minister, who John, maybe you know probably, was there as well, and he spoke quite a bit. And, and it was a good conversation. There seems to be a lot of support at, at the various levels, all the way down, but more importantly, at the national level. They, they all expressed that there was both bipartisan and bicameral support to try and salvage or keep the Southwest Chief. We know we got it through fiscal year nineteen. We're, they're hoping, and we're hoping, that maybe that'll continue. It's a well-needed, well-used, having traveled it recently, a well-used form of transportation for a lot of folks. Like to see that stay open, if I missed anything.
Think you did well.
Yeah, good.
Anything else? Jade?
Yeah, I just, I had two items that are probably more appropriate for after the start of our new police chief, but people brought them up, and I mentioned that I would, would check in again on, one is the community policing. Is there any change in that? Are we still awaiting more officers before we reintroduce the community policing? I've assured everybody that we really need to get the input from the new police chief. Any, any updates on that?
That, that would be correct. There's no change based on staffing, and that'll be something the new chief will address very soon.
Okay, awesome.
We haven't, we haven't forgotten the program. It's just a matter of resources and where we're at.
And then the Drug Enforcement Unit read about some success that they had on the, and I know the county is the one, the entity solely staffing that group now. Is that something that we would look at allocating resources to in the future? Would that be a new chief question as well?
Yes.
Okay.
We're putting a lot on him.
Yeah, and he starts tomorrow, correct? Good. I look forward to visiting with him about those items. So, that's all I had. Thank you so much.
Okay. Jade, you reminded me of something a week ago, and I've talked with the city manager about the Board of Trades. So, thank you for bringing that to the front of my mind. John has sent out a letter, I think about ten days or so ago, you indicated, soliciting folks, are you interested kind of thing. Not a whole lot of response to that. You did have a person who's interested in, in that email you sent me. But I wanted to ask each of you that if, if you have more, or if any of you have someone in mind, or someone who's approached you, but probably more so if you've got someone in mind, you might touch base with them, see if they're interested. I think we're probably going to need to generate, since we're creating basically from, from the ground. Keep in mind, we need one of each of a number, of six different trades, plus an architect, and then two at large. So, if you've got any folks in mind, I, I would ask and urge you to, and, and hope to be able to, to build, build that board up and, and get that, get that board functional. So, I ask your assistance in that. John, did you have anything to add to that?
To, oh, to the board, yeah, yeah. And I'm glad you brought that up because we got a couple emails, but I think it's going to be one of those deals where we may end up having to go out and recruit, as you say, and, but, you know, hopefully others will respond, but...
I heard from at least one individual who's a plumber, and he said, I got this letter, and kind of read it to me. Oh, perfect, that's, that's great. And, and I encouraged him to fill it out and get it back. I'm not sure if he's one of your respondents or not, but they, they were receiving it.
So, they got it, well, that's good, yeah.
Now, do you know what date the meetings will be on?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, that's going to be something, once we get the group selected, we'll set up an organizational meeting and, yeah.
And they'll decide.
They'll decide, yeah.
Okay. John?
A couple things. The council might remember back, it's been probably almost a year or better, when the Justin Combs, Tony Finley, and Carrie from the Hutch Community Foundation talked to us about the Blue Cross grant they got that was essentially for the, looking at the mobile food market, and that didn't work out. And so, they were able to get the focus changed to that joint Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And so, that process has been going on. The consultant, and this again is not, is, the city has no funds in this, is going to be in town the week of, be, maybe here the eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth. And they'd like to have a joint meeting of the City Council and the Hutch Rec Commission at eight o'clock on November thirteenth. And hopefully, we can have some of you there, if not all of you can, that's fine, but, and I don't have a location yet, but again, that would be November the thirteenth at eight o'clock AM.
No, that'd be right before, no, wrong week, sorry.
It's the, it's the in-between week, if you're looking at...
And I'll send out some more information on that.
Yeah, as long as you, yeah.
Would that be here at Hutch Rec?
I don't know yet. We don't have a date, or we don't have a location yet.
Our location.
But I'll, I'll send that out to you, and just so you'll know what that is. But again, that'll be a joint meeting of the City Council and the Hutch Rec Commission with the consultant working on the master plan. Of course, Justin will be there and Hutch Rec staff, too, so...
Sir, if you would, you need to be recognized. We're not, we're not at a point where there are public comments opportunity. Thank you.
Then the, the next thing, just a reminder, tomorrow, I think everybody's invited, we're going to, speaking of the new police chief, we're going to have a, I guess, a press conference, as you will, but just an opportunity to introduce the new chief to the community. And he'll be able to address questions from the media at that point in time. And we'll have just a short reception out in the, in the foyer for him. So, that's tomorrow morning, nine AM.
Nine AM.
In this room here. So, if you can make that, that'd be great. And then the mayor and I were talking ahead of this meeting about the League Supper. You guys, I think, council gets information from the league on that. The, the regional one here is October twenty-fifth in Inman at five-thirty PM. And I don't know the location in Inman, but it should be, we'll be able to find it.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't remember either.
It, it said, but I don't remember either.
Yeah, it's probably their community center, but we'll, we'll figure that out. But I may be going, and I think the mayor may go, so...
I might mention, they're doing, in association, association with that, at four PM, a presentation on Home Rule. It was a workshop at the League Conference, and I guess that workshop was kind of the rollout for what they'll be doing at the various regional meetings. I found it interesting. I was even thinking about attending again, just to, here the second time. So, if, if you're thinking about going, you might want to even go a little earlier for that Home Rule workshop.
Mayor, that's all I have, just a request for executive session.
Okay.
How much time?
Probably seven.
You sure?
And then, well, we'll probably come out and, okay.
Never fails.
We want to be right close to the time we want to adjourn, so...
All right, sounds good.
I'll give it a try. So, I would move to recess into executive session pursuant to the employer-employee negotiations, negotiations exception, KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-three, in order to discuss issues related to two thousand and nineteen contract negotiations with the city's bargaining units. The open meeting to resume in the City Council chamber at seven o'clock PM.
Second.
Been a motion and a second for executive session. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Hi, Reste Carvalho?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Inzkeep?
Yes.
Deckent?
Yes. We are adjourned.